Good evening and welcome to the Glendale, City of Glendale's Planning Commission Meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Asturian.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Manukian, Chairperson Asturian, and Shabazian.
Report for, in regards to posting the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand and seventeen, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Very good. So we'll be following Commissioner Chang Lee in the pledge of allegiance.
Can you all rise, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for approval minutes for April nineteenth and September twentieth?
I don't think you had quorum, Chairman.
So we don't, we've not had this quorum for the past two weeks.
For the past several months.
That's right. And so there has to be a solution.
Yes, members of the Planning Commission, you can, in order to move the business agenda forward, handle this a couple of ways. You can have the members that were not present review the tape of the Planning Commission meeting for purposes of confirming and approving the agenda at a subsequent meeting. So if those commissioners would, that were not present at that meeting would commit to look at that tape and then we'll bring it back. And then, then if we don't have one or another, there's four tonight, so we would have a quorum if everyone has either attended or has viewed a tape of that particular.
Okay, so let me, let me take April nineteenth. Who was here on April nineteenth?
I believe it was Sir Manukian and Shabazian.
So I have a question. Without having the quorum, how were you able to conduct the hearing?
There was a, I'm sorry, there was a quorum on the evening, which was Manukian, Lee, and Asturian, but since we don't have a quorum this evening for purposes of approving the minutes of those meetings, of the meeting, that's the issue that we have.
According to the minutes, we only had two memberships.
But I do nothing.
If we're looking at the minutes of Wednesday, September twentieth?
Due to lack of quorum.
April nineteenth.
Oh, at April nineteenth, excuse me.
Yeah, there was a quorum today.
There was or was not?
No, there was not. Everything on that meeting was continued to the next meeting, regularly scheduled meetings.
And you can approve those minutes for purposes of just establishing that there was no regular business agenda able to be conducted for lack of a quorum. I apologize.
Okay.
It says meeting adjourned.
So then, why don't we, if we can, have a motion to approve the September twentieth?
Moved.
We have.
Go ahead, and I can move the April nineteenth since I was present at that meeting.
Well, that's not enough, though, too.
But Mr. Asturian was present, September twentieth.
September twentieth, you were supposed to, so you approved the minutes?
Yes, yeah.
And Mr. Lee approves it too, right?
Yeah.
So that's out of the way. For the nineteenth, I guess we will do exactly what you said. We will review it?
Yes.
To my chagrin, four hours of tape?
Hopefully not four hours.
Okay, very good. Excellent.
I, I, I'm sorry, I need a clarification again. On the April nineteenth, I don't think we had a hearing, so why, why do we need to review the tape?
It's not for the April nineteenth meeting. There's no need to review the tape for that.
Yeah, we just moved, I mean, I was here, Asturian was here, so we just moved to accept the meeting minutes for the September one.
Correct.
So that, that's not.
Okay. Are we okay with that?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. We don't have any cards for the oral communications. We will move to zoning appeals. There is no agenda item for old business. Under the new business, we will be considering ten twenty-three East Colorado Street Suite number B, conditional use permit number PCUP one six two two five two six. Who do we have to give us a report on this? Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As mentioned, this subject case is located at one zero two three East Colorado Street. Property is zone C three. On January twenty-third of this year, conditional use permit case number one six two two five two six was granted with conditions to allow the operation of a massage establishment in this C three zone. The conditional use permit was subsequently appealed on February fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, the appellant being the City of Glendale Police Chief Robert Castro. The request in that appeal was the Planning Commission to overturn the planning hearing officer's decision to approve the conditional use permit and denied the subject application. The appellant contends that the subject massage establishment violated condition number two, which municipal code section five point six four one nine zero was cited for prostitution related activity on two occasions, the first being on December twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, the second on February first, two thousand and seventeen. These violations are considered misdemeanors. The December twentieth, two thousand and sixteen incident occurred after the Glendale Police Department submitted its response to the planning department's request for comments. The second one, on February first, two thousand and seventeen, occurred after the January twenty-fifth hearing officer hearing. Should be noted that the subject tenant has vacated the space soon after being cited by the police department, and the tenant's space has been vacant since that time. The Planning Commission decides to reverse the planning hearing officer's decision, thereby denying the conditional use permit application for the massage establishment, and a new conditional use permit application for massage establishment cannot be filed again until six months from the date of such denial, except upon proof of changed conditions or by permission of the director, excuse me, Director of Community Development. Staff believes that due to the violations as described by the appellant, the required findings for the conditional use permit cannot be made, and therefore the subject decision made by the planning hearing officer should be overturned, thereby denying subject conditional use permit case PCUP one six two two five two six. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. For the commission, there are plans located behind you if you're interested, as well as photographs, and Carmen Moreno from the City Attorney's Office and Police Department is available for questions if need be.
Do you have any questions from Mr. Bradley Collins? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we need any discussions on this. I'm ready to move.
Very good.
I move to deny the conditional use permit number PCUP one six two two five two six, thus overturning the decision that was made by planning hearing officer.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Asturian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Aye.
Chairperson Asturian.
Yes. By the way, just a correction, I'm the pro temp chair, right? All right. On and onward to our next case, which is twenty-nine forty-two and twenty-nine fifty Oak Glen Road, parcel map case number PPM one six oh three seven zero two. And who is going to be giving us a brief? Excellent.
The applicant is requesting approval of a tentative parcel map to subdivision an existing lot of two hundred sixty-nine thousand two hundred square feet, approximately six acres into four lots for the construction of three new single-family dwellings, maintaining the existing dwelling at twenty-nine fifty Oak Glen, which was built in nineteen forty-seven, and demolishing a single-family dwelling at twenty-nine forty-two Oak Glen, which was built in nineteen forty-four. The average current slope with the lots is forty-eight percent. No oak trees are proposed to be removed. The applicant is proposing four hundred eighty-two cubic yards of cut and seventy cubic yards of fill. The applicant is also requesting an exception from the subdivision code to allow the creation of new residential lots on a site that contains a secondary ridge line and less than the required lot width for three of the lots, and a variance from the zoning ordinance to allow a shared driveway for two of the lots, which would be lots three and four. Future residential development on lots will require approval by the designer review board. Lot one is located at the southern portion of the site with a frontage on Oakland Road. It would have an area of thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty square feet, a lot width of fifty-five point seven two feet, and average current slope of forty-two point five percent. The existing two-story house and attached garage would be demolished and developed with a single-family dwelling and attached garage access from Oakland Road. Oak Trees one, two, three, and four are located on this lot. The proposed lot two would be located just north of lot one and have an area of thirteen thousand two hundred thirty-five square feet with a lot width of fifty-five point seven two feet and an average current slope of fifty-one point five percent. It would be developed with a single-family dwelling and attached garage, also access from Oakland Road. Oak Trees five and six are located on this lot. For lot three, this slot would be located just north of lot two and have an area of seventeen thousand nine hundred sixty-nine square feet, be a flag lot with a lot width of twenty point five, twenty point zero five feet and an average current slope of fifty-three point nine percent. It would also be developed with a single-family dwelling and attached garage. The property would be accessed by a shared driveway with lot four and access from Oakland Road. Oak Tree seven is located on this lot. And lot four, which is the, at the northern portion of the site, would have an area of two hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred sixty-nine square feet, a lot width of about two hundred and fifty-four square, I mean, two hundred and fifty-four feet and an average current slope of forty-three percent. The existing two-story house and attached garage would remain, and the property would be accessed by the shared driveway with lot three. In terms of lot size and shape, the average area of the proposed lots is a hundred thirty-two, a hundred thirty-two thousand, a hundred fifty-two square feet, and the average area, lot area within the five hundred feet of the site is thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty square feet. So two of the proposed lots are slightly smaller than the average, and three of the lots have lot widths less than a hundred feet. The reduced lot width eliminates the need for cul-de-sac, and if you notice, the model up in front of you, this was done previously with an original proposal with a cul-de-sac and was completely redone to eliminate the cul-de-sac, which is, which are shown on the plans behind you and in your package. In addition, the shapes of the lots follow the existing contours, and although lot one is irregularly shaped and advanced to the south and east, this shape is preferable so that one lot includes the secondary ridge line and provides maintenance access if necessary. There are the seventeen protected indigenous trees on the property, which are mainly located in the valley bottom and on the lower slopes. Of the seventeen protected trees, eight are within the vicinity of the proposed construction, however, and no trees are proposed for removal. There will be protected tree encroachments as a result of the project, however, any proposed negative impacts can be reduced or mitigated with the installation of proper mitigation, proper protective measures and efforts by the developer to protect these trees. Our forestry division does support the project as proposed, with the condition that the indigenous tree permit is obtained prior to final approval of the site. In terms of grading, the applicant's proposing four hundred eighty-two cubic yards, as mentioned, and seventy cubic yards of fill. The cut is mostly for the driveways, as you can see on the plans on the boards. Staff does support, or does feel that all the findings can be met for this project and supports approval. We did receive sixty-seven letters in support of this project, which were also in your package. I believe that's my presentation, if you have any questions. Oh, the motion? We also provided a corrected motion for the tentative parcel map to eliminate condition
Can you, can you please read the condition number eight?
It was, condition eight was, "For all walls at or near a property line, items following should be drawn in scale and detail through sections and validated by licensed architect's approval stamped and signed for compliance. And then exterior walls, construction projections, openings, and penetrations of exterior walls of dwelling and accessory buildings shall comply with table R three zero two. And dwellings and accessory buildings equipped throughout with an automatic sprinkler system installed in accordance with section R thirteen shall comply with table R three zero two."
So is, is the reason for eliminating it because it was too long, too wordy, or was there?
No, it's not related to the map itself. It's related to construction that would follow a map, so these would be conditions that would properly be on a designer review case, not on a map.
So it's not a requirement for subdivision map?
Correct.
Very good. That's what I wanted to, any questions for Mr. Ward?
One question about the seventeen trees. What is the solution for that? The protected trees you were talking about, the seventeen?
There are multiple conditions that the forestry.
And there are reports along with it? But I think your major concern was the trees between three and the existing house that is going to be saved, right?
Correct, because it's so close to the existing house.
Thirteen and seven, was it? Or thirteen and eight?
Nine. A particular concern was tree number nine, as it was less than ten feet from the existing driveway, replacement driveway.
So I guess the mitigation measures and the protection measures that they have suggested is acceptable to our forestry?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions for Kathy? All right, so on the part of the team, Mr. Malikian, you, I have your card first. Do you have any team members along with you?
I do.
Who are they? Because some of them may have filled out a card, and I want to be fair, so.
I'm going to try to explain as much as I can. Civil engineer's here, arborist is here, so if there's any specific questions regarding the grading or the trees or anything, I'll try to explain as much as I can.
Okay.
So I think you'll address all your concerns and questions.
So would you need, how, ten minutes, fifteen minutes?
I have a PowerPoint presentation. I think I can do it within the five to ten minutes, the most, so let's, let's just kind of go over some of the key points that I wanted to emphasize.
Very good.
And also discuss the, the old version versus the new version, why it came about and where, where we are now.
So why don't we set it at ten, and if Mr. Malikian needs additional time, we'll be able to afford it all.
Thank you. So officially, my name is Alan Malikian, designer of project. Good evening, Chairman Asturian and members. What you have in front of you, we have a development of a project that we started a little over a year ago, actually, over a year ago. The proposed project that came in front of you, as a matter of fact, you were talking about April nineteenth, that was the day that it was supposed to be presented. Once we received the notices and, and the conditions from staff that, the, the negative conditions that we received due to the cul-de-sac and the removal of the oak trees, the grading quantities, what we decided, what I decided to do was to kind of step backwards and meet with all the departments. As a matter of fact, I met with fire, building, civil, public works numerous times. The result that you have right now in front of you is the direct result of fire department and how we came about to eliminate the cul-de-sac, which was the biggest challenge for us. So what you have right now, I'm going to go kind of step, I don't know if you want to dim the lights.
Sorry, can we have the lights maybe?
So what you have right now is you have an existing, little over a six-acre lot that there is, there are two existing homes. Okay? Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. So the existing home that will remain, which it's a far north end of the lot of the driveway, which you kind of see an image, I think you have it in your package, if you can just click on that. Yeah, if you can just click on it. And then you go to the next one. So, so, okay, then, then the existing, the house that is in the lower end of the building, if you click on that again, you have the two images that you have, that will be removed. Right now, as it stands, you have two single-family homes on a single-family lot. So as it stands, it is an illegal grandfather condition. So what we're technically doing is fixing what is there as a single-family home. The existing tree of number fourteen, which is the far, the, the one that is the closest to the open space, is the, the tree that is going to be within the drip line of the impacted of lot number three. The rest of the trees that are surrounding top and the existing homes, there are still part of the existing lot that will be part of lot four, but it won't be impacted. The only minimum impact would be lot, number nine, which will be the rerouting of the driveway. We'll talk about that, because right now, currently, it's, it's exiting illegally as ma, it's, it's coming out of the parcel on a road that it's not accessible, dirt road. So what we're doing is we're actually fixing that problem. Next, yeah. So and then the next one is the existing oak tree, which you can kind of see at the bottom left, bottom right photograph, which is the existing oak tree, number sixteen. That will remain as well. The result of the three homes that you see, the new homes, the shapes of those homes have been resulted because of the oak trees, how they are. Going back to the fire department, the, one of the conditions, and you, and we'll, we'll talk about it, oh, well, let's talk about the neighborhood later. So if you can just click on that. So the lot size range, it ranges from twenty-five hundred to twenty, you know, six point one acre, which is our current, our lot. Click on that again. So the average lot size around the, within the five hundred radius is thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty. The current subject lot is six, two hundred sixty-nine thousand. The proposed current lot, after we're done, it's going to get reduced by sixteen percent to two hundred and twenty-six thousand. So essentially, majority of the lot is going to remain as it is from, it's basically a reduction of sixteen percent. As Kathy explained, the new lots, there are three different lots that are within the average of the lots that we have within, except the last one, which it actually ended up being a little bit larger only because to accommodate the fire department access and the double entry for the two homes, which that's part of the, the variance that we're going to be getting. Next slide, please. So the overall site plan, I'll point out a couple of the items there. The, or, the, the red hammerhead condition, that was, that was the result of the fire department wanting to make sure that we're still going to have the hammerhead for the turnaround area. So we ended up showing that on the diagram. The end of the road is a hundred and fifty feet. The limitation of the hundred and fifty feet is set by fire department. If we go beyond a hundred and fifty feet, the cul-de-sac triggers, and that's where that came about. By eliminating the cul-de-sac, we, by basically limiting the paved road up to a hundred and fifty feet. From that point, we came back thirty feet to set the property line for the lot three, because you are required to have twenty feet of road connect, connection for the lot to be considered as to the public right of way, and an additional ten for the existing lot to be connected to, to, to access the paved road. So the ten and the twenty dictated where the property line for lot number three is. The balance of the lot two and the one is result of the hundred and fifty feet minus the thirty feet, and that's where the whole, you know, and then the regularity of the shape of the parcels. Can we go to the next one? So the proposed, the extent of the work, the area of work that we're proposing is seventeen thousand seventy-five square feet. The entire work area, the disturbance of the dirt earth is seventeen thousand seventy-five. The quantity of excavation that we've talked about many times is five hundred and fifty-two versus what we had originally, thirty-seven hundred and eighty-three cubic yards. The maximum height, which you actually can see on the diagrams that we have from our civil engineer, the bottom, which is, which is cutting through lot number three, is nine feet. The rest of the lots, as you can see, as you can see the contours, we've stepped the building to accommodate all the, to work with the existing grading, to minimize the amount of grading, and, and to reduce the retaining walls that we have. So just at the slight corner, which is the northeast corner of lot number three retaining wall, is the highest point that you will see, it's behind the building.
That's nine feet?
That's nine feet. Behind the building, per City of Glendale code, we are allowed to go up to fifteen feet, so we're well within that. Next slide, sorry. The, the, one of the important key features in this development, we have to realize, is that the amount of the, the amount of drain is that it's kept as it is right now, as it is. It's approximately, I believe it's ninety-six percent or ninety-four percent, if you can, I don't want to get, ninety-four percent. Okay, so ninety-four percent is, remains intact, no changes. The rest of the six percent is only to divert the water coming around and, and essentially getting the water that is sitting on around and then just kind of bringing, diverting it to storm drains along. So, yeah, and that's, that's what it is, and if you want, I, I put together a small little, I don't think that will work, so you need to open up the, I don't think, I don't think it'll do it. You need to open up the other slide. Kind of give you a little, yeah, there you go. So we'll kind of give you guys an idea of what this is going to look like. As you're driving up, you have the three homes that are sitting around, and that's the, the driveway that is going to lead up to the upper house. The homes are again designed around the oak trees that you have there, the existing oak trees, and the, the lots are stepping based on the hillside guidelines. This corner right here is the nine foot, the rest of them are sloping down, and the existing deck that you have there is the existing to remain. And this is the other oak tree that we built the house around. So what you have right now is the result of a quick revision of what we originally followed, and with that proposal, there was no variances, no special approvals that we were going to get on that one. The lot widths were based on what the city, I believe it's ninety feet or a hundred feet, I'm, I'm not certain on that. So it met all of those, and it met the fire department turnaround, the cul-de-sac and all that. But because of the.
Excavation.
Excavation, the tree removals, the impact, and all the rest of the, the negative impact to the development, we decided that we, we pulled back and we kind of go back to the drawing board, and we met with all the departments, and we came up with what you see right now. You have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Malikian?
I have a question from the staff. There was mention that there is a variance that needs to be applied for this, is that correct?
So, so the variances are, and, so the variances, and you can, you can, I mean, the staff can explain, but I think Laura can explain the, you want to?
I guess my question is, we are not, we are not going to make any decision on the variance, of course, because we haven't read about them here, but this is something that might come in the future?
No, the variance is related to the driveway.
Okay.
So, no, you would be making.
So, no, you would be making variance, you would be making variance findings, and they're incorporated and included as part of the findings for the track map, I believe.
Okay.
There's two, there's two motions.
Okay.
But if you're not going to approve, there's no use in doing a variance if the track map isn't going to be approved.
Of course. Thank you.
You mentioned about the hammerhead, I'm trying to look for hammerhead, where's, where's the hammerhead?
If you, it's kind of clear on the pink hammerhead that you see over there at the bottom, yeah, right there.
Oh, there, okay.
That was specifically a diagram that was given by fire department. It was a meeting, so we actually located that and met their requirements.
You talked about ninety-four percent of the drainage, the natural drainage.
Remains.
Where does it get collected? Where does it stay to save?
Everything, it's an existing natural, if you can kind of see right at the V shape, right now there is a, there is a low point, which actually it's a natural drainage, that remains intact. Any water and drainage that comes down towards the development, it gets siphoned, it gets drained through the catch basins, and it will be directed with a non-corrosive device and out to the street. I have the civil engineer, if you have any specific questions, but that is the general concept behind, and it'll be direct drained out to the street and to gutter and the storm drain accordingly.
No recapture of the rainwater?
Well, obviously, if there is going to be, you know, the, this is the site drainage. We're not talking about the actual recapturing of the development itself. The development itself will have its, the mitigation, the green, the mitigation of the filtration of the roof drains and the hardscape and all that. That will be drained in a, probably percolated into a natural soil. What we're discussing right now, what I was telling you is that the site, the existing drainage, how that's going to get conveyed to the street.
Okay, so if, any other questions for Mr. Maliki or? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we close the, the public hearing portion of this sort of thing, we have some cards that have been given to me and for folks that want to speak in regards to this project. I think I will be able to allow you three minutes each to start with. If you need, if you need a little bit more longer time, then I'll be happy to work out with you. Ralph Suarez.
Yes, hi. I think, I think the project's going to be great for property values, and I think any other owner or developer would probably consider doing a lot more homes than just the homes that are being proposed here. So I think that's nice, and I lived in, I was born and raised in Glendale, and I think it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Garcia.
Well, I just want to say, Yolanda Garcia, when I did receive this notice about signing that I would like to see this happen, I was very pleased. Just moved here from Pasadena. I am condo townhouse out. I came to this community because of all the green and the beautiful homes and the families that live here, and also being in real estate, we have so many people that do want to come and live here, and there's not enough homes. So when I heard this was happening, I was so, so excited. So I do hope that this project will happen, and I'm very, very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I hope I will not be butchering your name. Is it Pavel or Pavvi? P-A-V-Z or P-A-V-I, or is it Paul?
Oh, Paul.
There was no last name, there was only.
I didn't put Pagnoni on there?
No, you had P-A-V-L, so I.
Ah, that's me, yeah.
And then I had to look at your email, and that was, the V was closer to you, so that's how I figured that.
I should have been a doctor. I can't, I can't write. I'm, I'm the owner of the project. My name is Paul Pagnoni. I've lived and worked in Glendale my whole life, and I just want to point out that the initial design of this project, as Alan said, didn't have any variances or special requests. However, it did require the removal of some oak trees and quite a bit of grading. And that wasn't too popular with the neighbors. And subsequent to getting some of those comments, I personally met with many of the neighbors that had expressed concerns or problems with the project, and I think they're all very supportive now. And I just hope that we can move forward, because currently, there's two homes on this property, and they've both been rented for over thirty years. Even though this is a single-family neighborhood, they've always remained rentals, because you can't sell one without the other. So I think it'd be nice if we ended up with four, instead of two rental homes, four single-family homes that could be used, owner-user homes for people to live in the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I brought, I know you got sixty-seven letters of support, but I got another five.
You can give that to Ms. Stotler, so. Thank you. J.J. Molly? Did I pronounce your last name out this correctly?
It's actually Malai, but no one's.
It's Malai?
No one's ever got it.
It's not Molly, okay.
But we'll, we'll go with it. My name's J.J. Malai. I am actually born and raised in the community, and I have seen many developments that come through the area. I went through Dunsmore and Rosemont and grew up in the area. Basically, most of the developments that you see in the area, a lot of the developments have tried to put too many homes on properties. If you look at Oakmont, Markridge Estates, so I think it's really responsible to actually just put three or four homes on six acres rather than thirty. Also, I'm raising my children as third-generation residents in Glendale, so they'll have more open space. So basically, it comes down to one simple question for me. What's better for our community? Three, four new families or vacant land? And I think it's more families is better for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Suarez?
Hi, I'm Jill Suarez. I've also lived in the area my entire life, and I really do appreciate the fact that this density is so low. Typically, you see an area like this, and they do try to put quite a few homes on this amount of property. To only have four houses on such a big area is basically the best thing that could ever happen for this piece of land. And we do have an extreme shortage of homes in the area. There aren't enough larger homes for families. We're seeing a lot of people taking the little Spar Heights lots and going up because they can't find a bigger house. So it would be really nice to have four new available properties for people to move into and families to occupy. Thank you.
Thank you. Julian Martin?
Hi, I'm Julian Martin, and I am in favor of this project. I too have, was born and raised in Glendale, lived here all my life, and I'm a Realtor, and we do need more, we need larger homes for, for families, and the condos and the, that are, everything that's going up in the city, it's just, we don't see enough homes like this. So I'm really excited about this project, and I already have buyers for them.
Bye, Kishin.
Hello, everybody. We are the immediate next-door neighbor to this development. Been there for thirty years. My parents bought a house in eighty-seven. Grew up there, my kids know that area now, we're back in this area again. It does hurt, I guess, to say that I'm watching the area that I grew up in being developed, but it's, it was inevitable. I mean, there's barely any open land left in Glendale, and I mean, I am very happy. There was a development, probably about twenty years ago, that wanted to build up on the top, where we wanted to build like, I think, twenty homes. Luckily, that was shot down. This is a lot more reasonable. The only concern I do have is, right down the street, there is a condominium complex, and that condominium complex has really taxed the parking in the area. For what I saw, I think it's going to be taxed even more. That's, would probably be my biggest concern, and would be more in favor of something like the cul-de-sac. But obviously, you know, the oak tree problem. But, I don't know, I, I think that, that would be something that would be of some concern to us as the partner. But that's, I think, where, I think I would probably say that would be a bit of a concern.
You're not referring to nineteen thirty-five Alfa Road, you're referring to one that's thirty?
One eight three three, left of Rose.
Okay, got it.
So the lot right next door, I don't see it on any of the map, but literally right next door to the project. Yeah, so. Yeah, right. So that's the condominium complex? So this is the lot right?
Okay, it's, it's all right, we, I got it, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Henry Suarez?
Hi.
Hi.
I lived here since nineteen sixty-four, raised all my four kids, three of them Realtors, and I really look at some of the things that are happening in Glendale that don't look too good, like, for instance, on Central, you got tons of apartments or condos, whatever they are. People are going to be stuffed in these things. The traffic is going to be horrendous, and here we have just four homes with, you know, family homes that people can bring up their children in a safer, less busy environment. So I'm for this project, okay?
Appreciate it, thank you. Mary Suarez?
Hello. I've lived in Glendale for seventy-nine years, and I worked for Fremont School for twenty-seven years. So I know that the community is such a great community, but I think that we need more homes. I'm in favor of this project, because there's so many families that want to move into Glendale, because it's such a beautiful place to live in. Everybody's so friendly, and I mean that, because I've lived here, well, all my life. And I'm in favor of this project, because I think there's a lot of families that want to move to Glendale, because of the schools also. We have wonderful schools, and so I'm in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So did I hear you right? You lived here how long?
Seventy-nine years.
Seventy-nine years?
Yes.
You don't look seventy. Wow.
Mr. Suarez, you must be, have been doing something right. All right, Lily Martin?
Yes, hello.
Good evening.
I'm Lily Martin, and I also lived in the neighborhood for many, many years, and I'm definitely for this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Chris Sullivan?
I am Chris Sullivan. I have reviewed this project, I've been through that street a few times and kind of looked at what's there. Of course, I'm totally for this project. Like other people have said, we have a shortage of housing around here. There, in that immediate area, you have the large condo complex, there's a couple other large apartments and condo complexes on Alfa, so therefore, I could see where another developer may be trying to get a variance to put a condo complex up in that area, with the understanding that, hey, there's others in the area. Four houses on an enormous lot that basically no one's really going to see from anywhere, not the freeway, not Verdugo, or anyplace else. We've seen the renderings of those houses, they fit perfect for the area. I'm completely for these houses. And again, we, I think it'll be a good addition to the community. There could be a lot worse alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Turner?
Hi there, I'm Kimberly Turner, and I'm here just to state I'm for the project too, for all the reasons you've heard already. The low density, I think it's fantastic, and that you're not going to really see the homes, but they're beautifully designed from what we can see so far. So yes, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. So if you have any questions for Mr. Maliki's team, the project team, or the staff, I will be able to close and start deliberations. Any questions for anyone?
I just wanted to say to Mr. Maliki and Avoni, being able to work with your community and the city in a way that you have almost, I can say about eighty people with the letters that we've been receiving, support, and we don't see any, any opposition, is actually something to applaud. So it's, it's great to see developments like that going around the city.
So now that we are going to be applauding you, why don't you come forward, because I do have a couple of questions from you.
But that doesn't mean we're not going to grill you right now, by the way.
Please. Now, in the, and maybe this is both to you and the staff, in the body of the report, there is a mention that this project is two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-four square feet, whereas in the summary, it says it's two-sixty-nine. Which one is correct?
The lot size is actually.
Six point one acres.
Six point one, I think it's six point one-eight acres, if I'm not mistaken, and so six, two, I don't have my calculator, it's, it's, the variation is like point one or point, you know, I believe it's two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand and change, if I'm not mistaken, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand two hundred.
And so basically, there are two single-family homes right now on this property.
Yes, sir.
You're demolishing one, adding three, so you have a net gain of really two homes, as opposed to, this is for edification of everybody that is out there listening, you're really adding, it's a net gain of two new homes in, for this kind, for this size of a property.
Right.
The majority of the property remains with, is, what's the address of the house, the number four house?
It will, we don't have an address right now, but the, right now, the address is twenty-nine forty-two.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's.
But the majority of.
Right, fifty.
So the majority would be remaining with twenty-nine fifty, correct? I mean, that land belongs to twenty-nine fifty.
Right.
And there is mitigation measurements for brush clearance and all of that, because that house is going to own about two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand square feet of lot.
That is true.
Correct? All right, that, that'll do, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? All right, so I'll be.
I, I just, you know, out of curiosity, you know, on the fourth house sharing the driveway, they have to enter some sort of covenant, they're only for, for two different people owning that?
Yeah, they're going to, they will have a shared driveway, so they're going to have to have a covenant, how are they going to maintain a shared driveway, just like we would have for any other property that has a similar situation.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing. What say you?
I'll go ahead. I actually, if, if everyone is, if no one has any concerns about this, I actually want to move a motion.
I would ask that we do the environmental first.
Sure, of course, is that what we were, it was just passed out right now?
Yeah, we just wanted, we just passed one out, we did have one small change, we just want to make, to clarify that it's the mitigated negative declaration, the initial study, and also the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That is all in your packet, we just didn't put mitigation monitoring and reporting program in the actual resolution.
I think Commissioner Suarez, with your permission, just a little bit of summary now, in the mitigated negative declaration chart, all of the impacts, this is for the general public consumption, all of the impacts have been branded as less than significant or no impact at all. So that's one of the reasons why this commission is, is interested in moving this project forward.
So I was going to move a motion, if there are no.
All right, I'm going to read it then. So upon consideration of tentative parcel map number GLN 1634, to the records, files, reports, to divide one single-family residential lot into four single-family residential lots. And after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative parcel map and related exceptions from the subdivision code to allow the creation of new residential lots on a site that contains a secondary ridge line and less than the required lot width for three lots. The planning commission hereby adopts the mitigated, mitigated negative declaration and that the TPM, the tentative parcel map, and exceptions and hereby approved, subject to compliance with all the 30 conditions listed, which I'm not going to read, the 30 conditions based of the findings.
And we also need to have the, we also needed to, actually, we needed to have environmental read first.
Okay.
Then the variance and then the last one would be the tentative tract.
So do we need to read this entire?
Can we take three different motions? Because you have three different motions, right, in front of us.
Yes.
Why don't you take the environmental first, Commissioner Shavazan?
So do we read the entire thing right here that was just passed?
No, you can just, you can just read the top.
So, whereas the Director of Community Development considered the initial study prepared on behalf of parcel map GLN number 1634, secondary ridge line exception PRBSE 1603704 and variance PVAR 1724105 for parcel map application to subdivide an existing 269,200 square foot lot into four lots for the, for the construction of three new single-family dwellings, maintaining the single-family dwelling at 2009, or 2950 Oakland building 1947 and demolishing a single-family dwelling at 2942 Oakland Road building 1944. The applicant is also requesting an exception from the subdivision code to allow the creation of a new residential lot on a site that contains a secondary ridge line and less than the required line width for three, three lots and a variance from the zoning ordinance to allow a shared driveway for two lots located at 2942 and 2950 Oakland Road, approved on November 15, 2017, a proposed mitigation, mitigated negative declaration prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And everything else below. Or do I have to read everything?
No.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second. Roll call, please.
We have a motion and a second.
Planning Commissioners Lee?
Aye.
Saturian?
Aye.
Shabazian?
Aye.
Chairperson Protemastorian?
Yes. All right, so let's go to the next motion.
The variance.
The variance.
All right.
Can somebody make that motion?
Is that this one?
Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Saturian?
Since your study wants to finish.
Am I looking at the correct one?
Yeah, it should say exhibit one on it.
Okay.
Upon consideration of variance number PVAR 1603702 and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary, documentary evidence submitted with regard to set variance, that variance case number PVAR 1603704 in conjunction with tentative parcel map GLN number 1634 to subdivide an existing lot of 270,734 square foot into four lots of the construction of three new single-family dwellings to allow a new lot that creates a shared driveway between lots three and four, that the planning commission hereby adopts the mitigated negative declaration and that the TPM and exceptions are hereby approved, subject to compliance with the 31 conditions, or, is that correct, 31? Or 30?
The variance, we have 31.
31?
We took it out of the other.
Okay. Conditions listed below, based on the following findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Follow.
Second. Roll call, please.
Seconded by Commissioner Lee.
Chang Lee.
Planning Commissioners Lee?
Aye.
Saturian?
Yes.
Shabazian?
Aye.
Chairperson Protemastorian?
Yes. And the third one, Ms. Stotler, is?
It would be exhibit two. It's the tract map.
Do I need to re...
It was the revised.
Yes, I have the correct one. Do I need to re, re, okay.
Just, just the first paragraph, right?
Sounds good. Upon consideration of tentative parcel map number GLN 1634 to divide one single-family residential lot into four single-family residential lots and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative parcel map and related exceptions from the subdivision code to allow the creation of new residential lots on a site that contains a secondary ridge line and less than the required lot width for three lots, that the planning commission hereby adopts a mitigated negative declaration and that the TPM and exceptions are hereby approved, subject to compliance with the 30 conditions listed below under 30 conditions.
Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Lee?
Aye.
Saturian?
Yes.
Shabazian?
Yes.
Chairperson Protemastorian?
Yes. Thank you very much. So this project has been approved.
I wanted to add, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
I wanted to add one other thing. As Commissioner Saturian mentioned earlier, it's nice to see that developers actually care about the environment. Sometimes we see projects that barely meet the minimum. So it's good to see that you've worked, again, as I mentioned earlier, with your neighbors and, you know, you've actually spent the time to make sure that you are creating something that is going to fit, fit in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Can I make one comment myself?
Sure.
For me, the presence of all these neighbors, the happy neighbors, was very impressive. That tells me that whatever that you guys are doing is, is right. And normally in a situation like this, you always have some people that they are for it and some people are there against it. So in this case, seeing all of them, all your neighbors, they're happy, nobody had any, any problems. And all of them were very much happy about the project. That was very impressive for me.
So we will fare you, we will bid you farewell happily. Thank you very much for your being here tonight. All right, under new business... Folks, you can take the congratulations outside. We still have business to conduct. Okay, this, 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 this commission is still in the session, so please keep it down. Under new business, and the location is 1017 San Rafael Avenue, tentative tract map number 75012, PTT MCP number 1771546. Mr. Danny Manassarion. We'll go to you.
Good evening, planning commission. I'm going to give a brief overview and then you guys can ask me questions if there are any. The project involves the development of a new five-unit townhouse-style multifamily development in the R1250 zone located at 1017 San Rafael Avenue. The project is located on a relatively flat lot that is 7,588 square feet. There are a total of 12 parking spaces provided in this semi-subterranean garage with spaces assigned to each unit along with the required storage units. Of the 12 parking spaces, there is one guest parking space being provided. The lot is surrounded by multifamily uses on all sides. The project received design review approval on, in January 2017 and is currently in, in the plan check process with building and safety for the, for the development of the site. The site has 50 feet of frontage on San Rafael Avenue and has a depth of approximately 132 feet. The proposed building is a podium-style development similar to the, to many recent multifamily residential developments with townhouse-style units. The project includes a common outdoor space area towards the north and the west. Private outdoor space is provided for each unit. The development consists of a mix of two and three-bedroom units. There are two, three-bedroom units that range from 1,569 square feet to 1,574 square feet in size. There are two, there are three two-bedroom units that range from 1,236 square feet to 1,329 square feet in size. The driveway access to the semi-subterranean parking garage will be from San Rafael Avenue. The building will be two stories and 26 feet in height, which is the maximum height allowed by code. There are two-story buildings in northeast and south and a three-story building to the west. The neighborhood has a mixture of one, two, and three-story buildings. The density of the development at five units is less than the maximum permitted in the R1250 zone, which would be six on this lot. The site is physically suitable for the proposed type of development since it is designed to fit within the rectangular-shaped lot. The project is compatible with the surrounding buildings, given that the surrounding area is zoned for multifamily residential uses, and the neighborhood is predominantly developed with multifamily residential buildings. The residential development conforms to the city's goals for the development in the neighborhood and is consistent with the general plan elements as outlined in the tables in the staff report. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve tentative tract map, tentative tract number 75012 with the conditions to the attached motion. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Manassarion. Any questions for staff? No questions for you? You must have done a good job.
No, thank you.
Ms. Marjorie Rosson?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Haik Marjorie Rosson. I'm a tract engineer. My office is in Glendale. Excellent presentation of the project. I don't have to say anything more. And we are in the process of obtaining our building permit at this time and we are hoping we will achieve that by the end of this year. And we are just waiting for your blessing so we can go forward with this condo project. If you have any question, I'll be more than happy to ask.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marjorie Rosson? None?
No.
Unless there are questions that you have, I'd like to close the public hearing so you can deliberate.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing closed. What say you?
I'm sorry, do we have any questions?
Let me make the motion. Upon consideration of tentative tract number 75012 and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative tract, the tentative tract number 75012 is hereby exempt from CEQA, reviewed as a class three exemption and approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, chapters 16.16 and 16.32 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and 36 additional conditions listed below. And the planning commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings of fact.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Lee?
Aye.
Saturian?
Yes.
Shabazian?
Aye.
Chairperson Protemastorian?
Yes. Project is approved. In, on, on our agenda, item number eight is community development button updates. Ladies and gentlemen, any updates?
We don't have any updates.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the commissioners?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. We are so adjourned.